Before we start our formal meeting, we have to adjourn the prior special meeting. So, city attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council has reconvened from the special meeting closed session with no reportable action taken.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll go ahead and call the regular city council meeting to order. City clerk, may we have the roll call?
Mayor Kusamoto.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Chirico.
Here.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Thank you. Next, we'll do the pledge of allegiance, and after the pledge, if you can remain standing for the invocation, the pledge will be led by Councilmember Gross.
Please join me in renewing our pledge to the greatest country on earth. You ready?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads.
Gracious and heavenly Lord, we just thank you that we can be here to do the business of the city, that you have given us this great grift called liberty and freedom, that we can govern as best we see fit for the betterment of our community, our constituents, our families, and our friends. And as always, Lord, we just ask that you put a hedge of protection around the first responders, the firefighters, the police, the ambulance, and all those that keep us safe, the soldiers that serve under the flag of the United States. And for this particular day, we ask for a special blessing for the firefighters over in France that are trying to deal with the terrible tragedy over at the cathedral of Notre Dame. And again, we just thank you that you will impart on us the wisdom to carry on the business of the city, and we ask this in your great name. Amen.
Please be seated. Oh, but if the council may join me up front, we will have some presentations. Okay, first stop, we're going to have recognition of the Race on the Base sponsors, and I think I turn this over to Emlyn. Oh, Emlyn, please join us up here.
Good evening, everyone. We just want to recognize our Race on the Base sponsors for 2019. We had a great event at the Joint Forces Training Base February 22nd and 23rd, and it was really successful, and we just want to recognize our sponsors who are able to join us today. Our event host from the Los Alamos Joint Forces Training Base, Colonel Rick Lawler, if you can come and please continue to stand up here with us. Sponsor of the reverse triathlon, we have 95.9 The Fish, represented by Darla Colonel, and Justine Halloo. Our 5K Run Walk to Remember sponsor, we have Honoring Our Fallen, represented by Laura Herzog. One of our elite sponsors, we have the Event News Enterprise, represented by Dave Smitsen. Another elite sponsor, we have Optum Care, represented by Gina Kling. Official sponsor, Los Alamos Medical Center, represented by Susan Morales. Community partner sponsor, Gonal Lumber, represented by Patricia Adams. Is Patricia here? Community partner sponsor, OCFA, represented by Chief Roberts. Another one, I'm not quite sure if they're here yet, but Care Ambulance, represented by Lisa Carrillo. We have Bike Mechanic and Triathlon Clinics, TriZone, represented by Gaila Greeley. And then, was there anyone else who snuck in and I didn't catch? Anyone else in the crowd, Race on the Base sponsors? Okay, if you can all come and join us for a photo?
Two rows, please.
Thank you very much.
(applause)
We have one more Race on the Base presentation for the Race on the Base Council Commission Challenge. This is a challenge that we do every year with the city council and the other city commissions, and this year's winner is our Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Commission for the highest number of attendees of six out of seven and the highest percentage of 85 percent. Representing the commission here is Chair Stephen Olveda.
Thank you. Yeah. Does that count for you? Okay, next, sort of bittersweet, we get to, you know, celebrate someone's retirement, and we're going to miss him dearly. It's Captain Sean Connolly.
He's there.
There, yeah.
He's left the building already.
You'll get out of here, please, all right? Everybody can say something.
Oh.
No? But Captain, so you have family here?
I do.
Could you announce who they are, please?
I have my wife Helen.
Ask who stands. Just stand wherever you are.
I'll...
Go ahead, you guys.
I've got my lovely wife Helen, I've got my son Cashell, my son Quinn, and my last son Wyatt, and they're all thrilled to be here.
So, on behalf of the city, I'd like to thank you for, you know, the joy that we had to use your beloved husband, that he was here, served us well, and I know we're going to miss him, and I know the staff's going to, the force is going to miss him as well, but, you know, like I like to say, happy trails until we meet again. Thank you. Please come over here for a picture. Could you come up for a picture?
My speech.
Okay.
Right here. You know, 25 years ago, I started here. I have to admit, I came here for the job, but what kept me here was the community. It quickly became clear that this was a very special community, one that kept me here. There's opportunities, there's a lot of change, but I also wanted to say that the folks that I've worked with in the city, in particular the police department, they're some of the best people that I've known. They believe in what they do, and while they're professional, they're ethical, most importantly, you won't find another group who specifically and clearly care about their community. So, I appreciate all the years that I've been here and the support that I've received, and I thank you all very much.
And again, another bittersweet retirement for us is Corporal Robert Tommy, if you can join us up here.
Congratulations.
So, maybe out of a little bit, a different order, you want to talk first, then introduce your family? Please, come up.
Well, thank you very much. It's been an honor to serve a community that is full of good people, and it's easy to care about those that care in return for you. So, as Captain Connolly said, the quality of the people in our community is, it's so high. It's the reason the school district is what it is, and it's the reason that our community is as safe it is. So, I thank you for the opportunity to care for and provide for my family, but I thank you for also being a good community that worked with us and able to provide the type of safety that you all deserve and come to expect from us. Thank you very much, and I have here my wife Josie, she's in the back. (applause) And I've got, one, most of my adult children live out of the area, but I've got my son Ethan here, so he's representing the rest of our clan.
I don't want you to go away, so...
I'd like to use this opportunity to call all the uniformed officers, even if you're not in uniform, please come up here. Chief, would you join us?
Sure.
Call your chief. Let's get a big family picture while we're here.
Do two rows.
I gotta go to the back. I think it's all good.
Come on.
Come on, guys. Come on, come on.
Come on.
You're going to come up here anyways in a minute, so...
Oh, this looks so...
You'll all be in the front.
(laughter)
Can you just squeeze in? Thank you.
(applause)
Okay, so dispatchers, please, you're next. So, this is National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, and we have a proclamation in recognition of that. Someone want to say a few words about what, from Westcom? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Cassandra Bowden, I'm the Communications Director for Westcom. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of city council, city manager, and the Los Alamos Police Department for having us here today for this great honor and recognition. Each year during the second week of April, the city recognizes our public safety dispatchers for their dedication, professionalism, and quality of service. Westcom is a joint powers agency serving the cities of Los Alamos, Cypress, and Seal Beach to provide dispatch services for member cities, as well as contracting dispatch services for the Orange County Park Rangers. Westcom serves over 90,000 residents and covers a service area of 23 miles. We process over 28,000 911 calls and 97,000 police incidents a year. Dispatches are a critical link between the individual in need and their responding officers. Dispatchers are the first level of contact with the public in an event, an emergency, and requires a unique skill set to perform the job. Being a member of the communications center is extremely rewarding, as each team member exhibits pride, dedication, integrity, and top-notch customer service to residents and visitors of all three cities. Thank you for this recognition and the honor of serving your city.
Thank you. Councilmember Gross, would you like to say a few words?
Councilmember Gross is our representative on the joint powers, so if you want to say something?
You know, when you dial 911, the person that answers the phone are these fine people. They don't know what kind of a call they're getting, much like when they have to dispatch something, the officers don't really know what's happening when they arrive. The calm, professional way that they answer the calls is so critical to the officers in the field. It's a bond and a relationship that exists that doesn't seem to happen anywhere else. These folks have done an outstanding job. We're delighted to be able to recognize them and honor them, and call a private number if you don't have a real 911 emergency. It's available. I don't have it chimated to memory, but the chief might. If it's truly emergency, dial 911, and these folks will take care of you. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
(applause)
Thank you.
Life California Month, and we have someone here to receive from, is it One Legacy? And if you wouldn't mind saying your name, and would you talk about it?
Of course, of course. Good evening, and thank you so much for having me and including me here today. My name is Maria Jimenez, I'm an ambassador for One Legacy, which is an organization that's linked to donate life, not only here in California, but throughout the United States. We have the incredible opportunity to be the voice for the gift of life. My son was a very strong donate life advocate, even at a very young age, through high school, and we tragically lost him five and a half years ago to bacterial meningitis at the age of 22, and he was able to give the gift of life to three others. So, I continue to be his voice, I continue to be an advocate for donate life, to bring education and awareness to the community. So, I thank you again so much for having me here and being able to continue his legacy, and again, to continue the education and awareness. So, the pink dot on your driver's license, it's what's here in California if you are a registered donor. So, I just ask you to please consider and have the conversation and register, not only will you give the gift of life to someone, but you will also continue to create memories for their family and their generations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, council, and next we have a presentation on the Housing Trust. Would the presenter from ACCOC?
David Kiff.
Oh, David? Oh, thank you.
Hi there, thank you, I apologize, I was out in a lot of people here today.
Yep.
My name is Dave Kiff, I'm representing the Association of California Cities, Orange County, and I appreciate the opportunity to spend just a little bit of time with you talking about the Orange County Housing Finance Trust. I'm going to go through this very quickly, so if you have questions, please stop me, because otherwise it's too much to read, but basically, a housing trust is a repository for public funds for housing, and there's about 700 of them in the United States, over 700 of them. The Orange County Housing Finance Trust, as proposed, was created through legislation, AB 448, that's Assembly Member Tom Daley and Assembly Member Sharon Corks Silva. It allows the county and the cities to form the trust, and basically says that it can receive funds and it can distribute funds predominantly for permanent supportive housing. In other words, housing for persons who are formerly homeless, who can reside on their own, or at that point in their life where they can reside with, just with some assistance, somebody who lives nearby and kind of watches on them, watches them. There are three main documents, and two of them you might see if you consider this further. The bill itself has some strictures in it, then there are proposed bylaws under which the trust would operate. That includes a governing board section and conflict of interest rules and things like that. Then there's the joint powers agreement, and that's what the city would potentially agree to, and the mayor would potentially sign, that would, which would describe the city's participation in the sharing of a power to fund housing, for supportive housing and low-cost housing. Couple of key distinctions in the two documents, the proposed bylaws are just proposed, the joint powers agreement is actually finalized, and cities have been adopting it. The county of Orange adopted it, and last cities to do it were Fullerton, Buena Park, and Orange just last week, and we have a couple more lined up for tomorrow. This is how it's formed, I just mentioned, the county has agreed to it, then the cities jump in. Once it reaches three cities, which we have, we've reached three cities, they can hold an initial meeting, and then hopefully more cities would join. Those cities that join by May 16th can participate in voting on the governing board, that's the city selection committee, the next meeting. Once it's formed, the group applies for specifically Prop 1 funding, that was a proposition that passed in November of 2018, contains $3 billion for housing. 300 million of that is for housing trusts. Then the trust would issue a call for project, maybe, projects, maybe as soon as fall of 2019. It would review the projects, and then the governing board would award the projects, hopefully late this year, maybe early next year. We've had a number of issues come up, I'm going to run through them really quickly. Debt cannot be issued by the trust, so the answer to that is no. Hiring of staff, they can only hire contractors in order to try to avoid some pension liability, specifically. The county of Orange has agreed to cover the first-year costs, they'll kind of kick that off going with county staff actually sitting in the seats of the trust staff. County's goal is to use some of the Prop 1 money to fund that. I do spend a lot of time about costs, I'm not going to do it in PowerPoint, but to me, there are things that cities can do to help keep the cost down. One is if enough cities join, that distributes the cost better, and then, two, potentially, this A city, a willing member city, could agree to host the little staff and take that from there. There's a couple of unknown things, again, how many cities will join, what the actual apportionment is, and the amount of Prop 1 funds that might offset the expense. I provided this to all the city managers, including Brett, this is just kind of a general concept of what would happen if, say, if I'm a medium or small city, what would my potential upside, high side of the cost be? And again, this is a little bit elaborate, but it's anywhere from, let's see if the pointer's working on this one, I can figure it out, it's anywhere from, if you're a medium to small city, 4,000 to 5,000 per year, and then, but if fewer cities join, it could be as much as 8,000 to 12,000 per year, potentially. And that's, again, to me, some of those, these two are kind of the worst-case scenarios, the previous slide is the better-case scenarios. Why is the board the way it is? It's a result of negotiations. The board has to have four county members and five city members, and the county insisted on close to majority so that they could, because they're bringing some of the money to the table. It also must be elected officials. There are two housing trusts in the county, and this gets confusing. You folks may have read that Disney gave $5 million to a housing trust, it was to the private one. The private one is intended to provide loans for homeownership. This is a public one intended to take Prop 1 money, and kind of, the whole goal of this is to kind of go in with linked arms, Orange County cities and the county, go to Sacramento and say, "We need Orange County's share of the state money to make sure that we can build enough units here." So, but the concept between, behind the finance trust is to grant the funds to supportive housing projects. In other words, it wouldn't be a loan that needs to be repaid. Cities can leave the trust, yes, because there's no debt and no contract staff. The JPA document says if you're unhappy with how things are going, you have to give six month notice. What money will the trust likely have? Most likely, as I mentioned, Prop 1 funds. Some cities may want to give their SB 2 funds to the trust and contribute those maybe on a short or long-term basis, those would be from willing cities. It will accept private donations, doesn't have to. The county will probably keep some of their Mental Health Services Act and kind of slide it alongside the Prop 1, the trust monies, because the county's Mental Health Services Act funds have different strings attached to them than Prop 1. And then, this is my last slide. Does joining this trust mean I have to come to the table with project money? No, there's no cover charge to enter. The JPA says that any member can join without having to promise to build projects. Do you have to come, sorry, projects, or, this answers both questions, I apologize. You don't have to come to the table with units, you don't have to come to the table with money. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I realize I went through that pretty quickly, but it's, PowerPoint's can be boring.
Thank you. So, are there any questions?
I've got a call. On the board makeup, you've got one representative representing the small cities under 60,000, so that's 50% of Orange County cities are under, so we're going to have, we're going to get one for 17 cities?
Yeah, not everybody can be on the board. We didn't want to recreate a fire authority, and this thought that the large cities would have, one from each service planning area would have the seat, and then, of our five slots, of our city's five slots, there'd be one other one for a medium-sized city and one for a small city. And I do, I do want to reiterate, this is a, this has been a collaborative process so far with the county, and I don't expect any city who becomes a member of the trust to feel like they're shut out of discussions, or not, not having the same type of footing for project applications as, say, a board member city. We really see the five city members who are on the board as being representative of all the cities and advocating for all cities and any city that has a project application. But again, we just couldn't do so much.
Right, but one board member for 17 cities seems a little off-kilter?
It depends on how many joined. If only three of the small cities joined, it's one for three, yeah. But I really appreciate what you're saying, we did talk about a larger board, and then the group just kind of thought that was getting unwieldy.
Okay. And then also, I know you're with ACCOC, and you, your organization was the driving force behind us, you're a lobbyist organization in Orange County, so what is your role after the JPA is formed, and what's, basically what's in it for you after this is all said and done?
So, ACC is a nonprofit organization of, it's an alliance of cities, not all the cities, but some of the cities. It was, one of the issues that we tried to tackle last year was to say, how can cities come together to help solve our homelessness and affordable housing crisis? So, we asked that this bill be introduced. There's no ownership otherwise from ACCOC of the housing trust, there's no expectation that we would run it, or we would have staff that would work on it, we were just kind of trying to get it off the ground and rolling, and hopefully put in some good units.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Good question.
You have questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so next, a little bit of housekeeping items. On the agenda, we're going to move 12A right after item nine, and I believe I can announce at this point, 10C will be pulled from consent calendar and will be considered after we go into, after we come out of closed session. And before we go into oral communications, I would like staff, if, you know, want to introduce our staff, we have our city clerk, Wendy Quinton, are here, our city attorney, Michael Dought, and city manager Brett Plumley, and if you can announce your staff, please.
Police chief, Eric Nunez, recreation manager, in La Nada, development services director, Les Johnson, outgoing finance director, tonight is her last meeting, I want to congratulate her and thank her for her work and recognize the work that she's done, Maria Luisa Valdez. We have incoming finance director, Eric Hendrickson is starting with us, and actually, today is his first day. We have David Hunt, our city engineer, Ron Roberts, our division fire chief, and Chris Carr, our captain.
Thank you. Okay.
We also have Sean Connolly with us tonight, too.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, item six, it'll be oral communication. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak about any item within the jurisdiction matter, the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council, and remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. And if you did want to talk about those other items that are being pulled, you will have a chance to talk about those as well, and I'll open up... a chance to talk about those as well, and I'll open up communications for that. So any member of the public wish to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, my name is Art DeBolt. I'm a resident of Los Alamos. Tonight, I'd like to just express my frustration and concerns over the work that's being done on, by Golden State Water and their contractor for the relocation of the water meters in the apartment row area that are located in the alley. They want to relocate, not want to. They are planning on relocating those meters into the parkways in the front. Why? I have no idea. But in any event, my frustration, my concern is over the workmanship that's going on. The, the work is abysmal. The trenching that they've had to do in order to relocate the water mains against the curbs on Green Howard and Farquhar has left the patching to be irregular. I'll say, obviously not compacted properly. If this is temporary, hopefully it is, but I've been hearing rumors that this is the way they're going to leave it, which is totally unacceptable. I don't know if any of you have driven the area. If you have it, you do need to go over there. You've got saw-cut concrete that's being filled in with asphalt. That's unacceptable. You've got relocating fire hydrants where they're crossing the streets, crossing Howard Avenue. The compaction on the fill underneath the asphalt that they put in is obviously not adequate, as it has sunk, and the roadway is irregular. The, the quality of the asphalt, I don't know if it's just because it was cold when they put it down or what, but as the cars drive over it, it crumbles. The street sweeper goes by, moves it all around a little bit, doesn't pick it up, is frankly terrible. In the suburbia area, suburbia tract where I live, they've, they've come in off of Maple, tore up the suburbia street on one side. The patch is irregular. Again, this is unacceptable. I mean, just simply unacceptable. And this is only the first phase. The second phase is they're going to be going back onto city property in the, in the, in the parkways to begin the process of trenching or boring from the front to the back on the side, in the side yards, and somehow tying in with the existing water lines that we have, so we can, so they can supply the water to the building. It's like, it's like trying to do brain surgery and kind of going through your butt to get to the brain, but however, if this is what they want to do, that's up to them. But I would like to offer a suggestion to this council that you, and I think you probably should agendize a discussion if that's possible, but before any permit is issued for them to begin this Phase 2, which is to be on the person, on the private property, well, in the public right of way, but going through the private property, that before one permit is issued, all of the streets should be completely patched, paved, to a standard that it was prior to when they started. And I don't mean substantial compliance, I mean 100% that these, that this be done. Otherwise, I suspect that the quality of work that we're seeing now, albeit maybe temporary, is what's going to try to be left, you know, either incomplete or unsatisfactory. And they, and they should not be allowed to go into their Phase 2 until that is completely done, because they will have to pull a permit to go into your parkways and, you know, to make the, to make the connections. I will add to that, I really do feel the city needs to get involved and provide a notice to all of the, all of the property owners, that, you know, that this is not a project of the city, that this is a project of Golden State Water, that before any permit can be issued, that they need to have the permission of the property owner before they can pull the permit with the city, and that the homeowner should be advised that they should seek either legal counsel, or they should seek input from their plumber or whatever as to the adequacy of how they're going to make the, the, how they're going to traverse the property. Because from what I have, in my conversations with Golden State, they're going to be doing this as cheap as possible, and they want to guarantee their work on the private property for only two years. Two years.
Thank you, Art DeBolt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to speak on any item?
Good evening, Mayor Kuzamoto, city council and staff. My name is Randy Hill. I'm one of five traffic commission members, your comments brought tonight. And we are here to understand how the traffic commission can better serve our city council and our community. The commission followed the direction from staff, which included, and this is regarding permit parking, I apologize, which included sending surveys to all residents and owners in the areas with permit parking. We also received feedback at our meetings, as well as emails and letters. The commission reviewed the rationale behind the implementation of permit parking back in 1999, area by area. Recommendations were made to the city council based on those studies. We had no feedback suggesting ovation homes or the Joint Forces Training Base were in any way an issue to our residents. We also heard no feedback that New Dutch Haven and Carrier Row should be combined. Considerable feedback was received that permit parking was not enforced, and many long-term residents were not even aware of it. This led to discussion of enforceability. Do we want laws that are or are not being enforced? And are we able to enforce them if we do implement them? There were, there were individuals with suggestions that were not consistent with the majority of the feedback, such as the comments from city council. Those individuals were given direction on procedures to change the permit parking, including getting petitions signed by 75% of the impacted residents. At this point, the traffic commission and staff are unclear on proper procedures and direction. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close oral communications, and we'll go to, oh, thank you. Please go forward.
Thank you. Dear Honorable Mayor and council members, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Sean Kim, and I am the program director with International Youth Fellowship and Gracias Choir, Gracias Music Foundation. I am here tonight to invite you to our third annual IYF World Leaders Meeting in Long Beach, followed by Easter Cantada, a musical show that will be performed by the world-renowned and award-winning Gracias Choir on April 21st. We strive to serve the community by giving joy and hope through music. For the past three years, our Easter Cantada and Christmas Cantada have been touching the hearts of close to 40,000 people. And IYF and GMF are nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization that builds a solid foundation for leadership and giving global mindfulness for youth locally and around the world. The Easter Cantada is a musical program that has brought joy and hope to thousands worldwide. And also, we are globally implementing our educational system called Mind Education, and we have been working together overseas with many governments signing MOUs. And we would like to invite the county, the mayor and the council members to be introduced and hopefully to work together with this program. And I would like to invite actually everybody that's here to the Easter Cantada that's going to be at the Terrace Theater in Long Beach on the 21st, 3:00 PM and 7:00 PM. And the meeting for the, the world leaders would be at 5:00 PM at Westin Hotel. So thank you guys for your time, and if we may be able to get a short meeting with you, Mayor, after this meeting, or anytime you're available in the week, I would really appreciate it to further explain to you the, the meeting.
Thank you for the invitation. So it is 3:00 PM on Sunday, the 21st, at the Terrace Theater.
The meeting will be at 5:00 PM, and it's going to be at the Westin Hotel. Mayor, I have all the information right here, and I'll, how can I?
Get it to the city clerk, and we can get it distributed. Thank you, Mr. Kim.
Thank you, sir.
And then my contact information, you get it from the city clerk as well, and we can set something up. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing nobody else, we'll go ahead and close oral communications. And next, we'll have item seven, council announcements. Any particular, anyone want to go first?
Thank you, Mayor. So I attended the Budget Standing Committee meeting with Councilmember Hasselbrink. We're doing everything we can on the Standing Committee to have a balanced budget for the year 2019 to 2020. We're also trying to get a handle on future projected budgetary shortfalls, and we're considering every option out there to try to ensure that our city is in a sound fiscal position. The recreation booklet that goes out to all the residents has a nice chart in it this month showing the financial funding model and showing the sort of bleak future picture of the city's finances as a result, primarily of increasing pension costs. So I would encourage folks to check that out and check out the information available on the city website about the projected budget shortfalls, and get educated and get involved as well. I also attended the first Kiwanis of Los Alamos meeting, along with the mayor. This city has a lot of great opportunities, including Kiwanis, including many other organizations, a lot of great opportunities for everyone to get involved and to give back to the community. So if anyone's interested in that, has some extra time, I would encourage you to look into one of the many service organizations we have in the city. I attended the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control Meeting. There has been a recent positive test for West Nile virus in Orange County, and there's concern with all the rain that, that we have this year, that there's going to be a significant increase in the number of mosquitoes, especially those new 80s egypti mosquitoes that are biting everyone's ankles, and they bite multiple times, and they bite in the middle of the day. And so we expect to get a lot of complaints about that, but we won't know the amount of the increase until closer to summer, but that is a concern. I also attended the Weekend of Art, which was, as always, wonderful event. The state of the city, the chamber, city staff, and the mayor all did a great job with the state of the city. And I want to just take a chance to say thank you to Maria Luisa Valdez. Today's her final meeting. We on the Budget Standing Committee have been working with her for the last year and a half, and it's been a pleasure, and thank you for all your hard work, and we want to welcome Eric Hendrickson as well. Thank you.
Okay. Dean, would you like to go next?
Sure. I've got kind of a lengthy list, and I'll go through it as quickly as I can. I attended the State of the City luncheon over at the Joint Forces Training Base. The mayor did an excellent job in making that presentation. I participated in the commissioning ceremony for the U.S. Coast Guard Rapid Response Cutter in San Pedro on March 22nd. That evening, I was involved in judging submissions of the Weekend of the Art program. Lot of great entries this year, and Parks and Rec did a great job on that. Following day, I attended the local meeting for the California local elected officials. Then I followed that up on the 26th by going to the formal retirement celebration for Orange County Fire Battalion Chief Acosta. I think he's finally gone now. Is that, he's on his road there? On the 27th of March, I attended the swearing-in of our newest Orange County Supervisor, Donald Wagner. That's District 3. The following day, I attended Legislative and Regulatory Committee meeting, policy meeting for the, I'm sorry, the regulatory and legislative meeting for the ACCOC. I attended then the following day the League of California Cities Board Policy Committee meeting in Costa Mesa, and I'll be sharing some information with the rest of the council from that meeting. Also that day, I attended Congressman Lou Correa's recognition ceremony for Vietnam veterans in Anaheim. Very moving ceremony and, and well-attended. On April 2nd, I attended the monthly meeting for the CERT program at Long Beach Fire Headquarters. Following day, I attended the League of Cities Training Workshop on the Future of City Financing. Then on April the 10th, I participated in a disaster training exercise at the Los Angeles International Airport. April the 12th, last Friday, I attended the day-long conference for the Orange County, I believe it's Congress of Governments, HOCOG?
Council.
Council of Governments. Very interesting, and I have some information to pass on. I've already passed some information along to city staff. And then earlier today, in Buena Park, I attended the League of Cities Training Workshop on pension reform, and I'll be having packets copied so that I can distribute those amongst the council. And that's my report. I would like to ask that the comments made by Mr. DeBolt be agendized for a future meeting and that the city take a look at what's going on. I've had a number of calls and emails from people over in the apartment row area, basically, especially regarding Farquhar. And I know there's an agenda item tonight, I think, on Farquhar for bid, but we owe the public a better notice on that. And in terms of the traffic commission thing, I can share the frustration that Mr. Hill spoke of. I don't know how we improve our communication, but we need to figure out a way to, to do that with not only traffic, but our other commissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on.
Sure. With my other colleagues, I joined the Weekend of Art. As usual, it was amazing, and we've now officially outgrown our facility for that event. So the next trick is to find a bigger facility, because we like having all the artists there. The live entertainment was great. I was the keynote speaker at the 79th Sustainment Their Women's History Lunch, although it was terrifying. They are a very gracious group, and I shared some of my wisdom, albeit what it is, with them. And I attended with Mayor Kuzamoto the California Parks and Rec Society District 10 Dinner. They recognized Dr. Sherri Cropp and the Joint Forces Training Base with their Volunteer Merit Award. That was nice, because I think there were six awards given out, and we were two of them. So that was, we were well-represented. For Orange County Fire Authority, we had a busy meeting. We sworn Don Wagner as our newest board member. He took Todd Spister's place, who won district attorney, so he is now the second member for, from the Board of Supervisors on Fire Authority. We approved unanimously to bring Irvine back into the Orange County Fire Authority. This was after 10 months of negotiation. Some of the things that are going to be coming out of that negotiation are really affecting the, the JPA as a whole, the region. We're going to be building a joint police-fire training facility in Irvine. It's going to be OSMI Irvine, but we will have full access to it for any kind of training facilities, also adding an additional emergency operations centers at that facility. We'll be doing bidirectional modifiers to improve communication signals in remote locations of the county. We're also going to be creating a 115 trust to deposit $2 million annually for pension liability. It's a, just another way of being able to invest money at, at hopefully better rates, better returns. And then we're also creating a drone program for fire prevention, detection, and suppression. It's bringing back 11 stations, and like I said before, all the improvements will benefit the entire JPA, not just Irvine, so we were really excited about that. That night, we also approved unanimously for Garden Grove to join the Orange County Fire Authority, and this is really key for us up here. This was after a one-year negotiation. This is going to be adding seven additional stations with improved services for North County. The station on Valley View in Cerulean is very, very close to Parkwood, which will handle our residents, and also College Park East. It will alleviate some of the burden of the Steel Beach Station over by Leisure World, and also our station over on Green. It's the addition of two paramedic trucks and five paramedic engines. All the current employees from Garden Grove Fire will become employees of Orange County Fire Authority. Nobody's losing their job. Some of them are getting pay raises. There's one demotion, but it's no pay raise, so everybody seems very happy with that. Garden Grove will retain all their current pension liability that they've accrued for fire, and the effective date on this is August 16th, so we're very excited about that. So now I think we have 29 out of the 34 cities on Orange County Fire Authority. In regards to Mr. Hill's comments, I'd like to maybe offer a couple of suggestions. We used to, a few years- used to, a few years ago, we used to do combined workshops with some of the commissions. And the Traffic Commission, pardon the pun, but it's the driving force of our city. It's probably the number-one complaint in our city. It affects residents. It affects businesses. It affects pedestrians. And I think it would be nice if we sat down as a workshop and kind of, we brought our insights from our neighborhoods. They brought their insights from their neighborhoods, and also as commissioners, and we kind of set out what makes sense. So we're consistent. It seems to be the lack of consistency that we have. And it's, we don't get to watch the meetings because they're not televised, so we're really reliant on reading the minutes and asking staff questions. And I think it would just really, really be helpful. We've had a couple of gaps in communication, and I don't ever want to look like that we're working against each other. And I think maybe scheduling some sort of workshop might be a good idea. And with that, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I also, with all my colleagues, attended the State of the City. The mayor did an excellent job. Want to give special thanks to Larry Strather and Chelsea Wilson for their behind-the-scenes works. Brett, you did a good job as moderator. If there'd only been a few more slides, it would have been perfect. Okay? The art weekend continued to grow at a phenomenal rate, but what touched me most about the art weekend, we had two, two great stories. One was Megan Shimada, who came off a sick bed to keep the thing going and have it run as efficiently as it did. And then our own Emmeline Noda, who gave a very heartfelt speech that was almost perfect. The only mistake she made was she asked the introverts in the room to raise their hand, to no, no response. That's why they're introverts. You know, we did not thank last, last month, the people, the volunteers on the race for the base. And so I'd like to do that now. Those people, about 5:30 in the morning, sunburst, and all the other volunteers, you know, thank you very much for making that chaotic, crazy morning a success. And finally, a free life lesson to all the students who are out in the audience wishing I'd shut up so they could go home. This is the fourth opportunity you've had to come to these meetings. The life lesson is, if you had come to the first meeting, you'd be done. The first meeting, the first meeting was a rainy, dismal night. The meeting lasted till about 7:00 o'clock, and you'd be out enjoying this beautiful spring evening. Instead, you procrastinated, and here you, here you are, where you probably had 10 other better options than coming here, but you had to. So there's the lesson. If you just handled it, handled it right up front, you would have been done. Okay. And finally, Maria Luisa, thank you for all you did. Eric, welcome. You have big shoes to fill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So with, I also attended the Weekend of Art, the State of the City, and I do have to say, total credit goes to Brett and your staff for putting it all together. It was sort of coming together rather quickly at the last minute, but seamless, and I appreciate that. So thank you for that. I had the opportunity to attend Judge David Carter's hearing on the homeless, and brought a report back here to the council. I also attended the CPR's dinner with Councilmember Hasselbrink. And the part about the JTF, JFTB that she didn't mention is that General Lathrop came to this event in his full dress blues, looking really sharp, and I got to escort him up as he received the award on behalf of the Joint Forces Training Base. And then the other thing I did was the We Care Annual From the Heart fundraiser, the 13th annual, so I attended that. And the work that that organization does is just really terrific, and I think it just kind of goes unnoticed here in the community. And then I think lastly, before we go to items from the city manager, for the students out here, I would hope that you'll stick around at least till after this, the hearing, the public hearing that we have coming up. And at that point, I will take a break, and you can get all your papers signed by whoever you can find, and I believe council can sign. Staff over here would be able to sign as well. So we'll try and get along as soon as the hearing's over. So that's the important, that'll be the interesting part, I think, for your, your studies as well. So with that, I think council comments, announcements are closed, and we'll go to items to city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council. A lot of thank-yous as well. Thank you, Maria Luisa, for your service to the city. Appreciate everything that you've done, and congratulations on your next venture. And welcome to Eric Hendrickson, our new finance director. I want to thank Emmeline and Ron and your staff for Weekend of the Art. Great event, once again. And as Councilmember Hasselbrink said, we're outgrowing our facilities, which we know we're doing. It was, it was great, very good. And Mayor Kusamoto, congratulations on an outstanding State of the City. Appreciate your presentation. It was very good. And Captain Connolly, I want to thank him for his 25 years of service to the city and to the police department, and to me, and to the staff, and to the council. We're gonna, we're going to miss him a great deal. Keep asking him if it's really May 2020, but it's not. It's May 2019 when he is retiring. And I wanted to have Emmeline just do a brief update on the upcoming Spring Carnival this Saturday.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. I have a few brief announcements in addition to Spring Carnival. So our Memorial Care Miller Children and Women's Hospital Long Beach Spring Carnival, presented by AYSO 159, is this coming Saturday, April 20th, from 9:00 to 11:30 at Little Cottonwood Park. The event is full of activities for all ages, including egg hunts, face painting, balloon twisting. We have about 15 game booths and 30 vendors. It's growing. Inflatables, food trucks, arts and crafts, a live band, photo, family contest, and a photo with Peter Rabbit. And we also have our upcoming donation drive. I'd like to challenge the students to spread the word at the high school and your, at schools that you attend. We are collecting diapers and wipes, toddlers, size four and five, and also paper goods for those in need. So this is a great project for the schools to participate in. This is in partnership with Southland Credit Union, and the due date is May 8th to the Los Alamos Community Center. And we also have Serve Los Al. That's June 21st, 22nd coming up. Servelosal.org is the sign-up. We are looking for 300 volunteers to help us with the citywide volunteer service event where we serve the local nonprofits and beautify our city. Thank you very much.
Mayor, just also wanted to thank Westcom and Casey Bowden and her entire staff for the service that they provide, dispatch for the entire community, and specifically for Cypress, Seal Beach, and Los Alamos.
So I have a couple of questions for you. Can you talk about the Drug Takeback Day, or maybe it's coming up, right, Captain?
Yeah, the date.
27?
So we'll be partnering, we'll be partnering with the high school and the DEA, April 27th, 10 to noon, or I'm sorry, 10 to 2, in the front parking lot at McCullough Middle School.
Could you describe again what it is? It's the unused prescription drug?
Yeah, so this is any, any home prescription medication that people possess that are either expired, or if you're not taking it anymore, you can just bring it to us. We'll take liquids as well as pills. This is just a safe way of disposing. And again, just collecting it, getting it out of our, our trash cans, our landfills, and, you know, just safe disposal. So any participation is welcome, and, you know, we appreciate the effort.
Yeah, we don't want it flushed. Certainly don't want it on the water table in the ecosystem. And then the last thing I was going to ask you, do you want to comment about next door, or you want to hold that off?
Oh, yeah. We can, we've sent out press releases, and just outstanding news for the entire community and all the students that are here today. We have Epsom. The North American headquarters is next door to us. They signed a lease with Lincoln Properties, and they will be doing significant improvements to their building and bringing 600 high-paying jobs, shoppers, and diners, and going to be an outstanding community partner with the city of Los Alamos. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Next item is Item 9 on the warrants. Is there a motion for the warrants?
Phil moved.
Nope, second.
Hasselbrink moved, Murphy seconds. Roll call, vote please.
Mayor Kusamoto?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Murphy?
Aye.
Councilmember Chirco?
Aye.
Councilmember Gross?
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Okay. Consent calendar. So we already pulled C. Oh, I beg your pardon. No, we're going to move on to, again, housekeeping, a little bit out of order. We're going to refresh my notes. 12A, 12A next, out of order. And if we can have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, City Council. This item, we are pleased to bring forward the consideration of an approval for an employment agreement for, as already been mentioned, Eric Hendrickson, our new finance director. If you approve this agreement tonight, the, on August 2016, Governor Brown signed Senate Bill 1436, SB 1436, and it requires agencies to report out information for management, compensation, and benefits, basically for our executive staff. And Eric comes to us from the city of La Habra Heights, where he served as the finance manager for the past few years, and another local city before that. And he also served as a CPA before that. He has a degree, bachelor's degree in business administration with an emphasis in accounting. His salary will be Step C, Tier 2, $56.92 per hour, $118,400 annually. And with that, it's staff's recommendation to approve the agreement with Eric Hendrickson as our finance director.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Murphy moved. Gross, second. Any question, discussion? Poke at the guy? No? Okay. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, now on to Item 10, consent calendar. We are going to pull C. Is there anything else that needs to be pulled? Any requests?
I'd like to pull F.
F is pulled. Is there a motion on the balance?
I'll move.
Chirco, Murphy, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Passes. Okay, so 10C, we're going to hold. 10F, do you want a staff report?
No, I don't need a staff report. I just want, in discussions with Golden State Water and what they've done to our streets, and specifically Farquhar, I just want to understand the timing on this and what we're going to be doing, making sure that we don't touch Farquhar until Golden State Water returns to it as-is, and then we can really assess what needs to be done there instead of spending the money.
Yeah.
I think they have a huge responsibility to get it back to where it was, and we don't want to use this money to fix their problems.
Thank you, Councilmember Hasselbrink. Excellent question. And also give us an opportunity to update you not only on this project, but staff has been following up with Golden State Water on the project that they've had. So Les Johnson, the Development Services Director, can give an update on that.
Mayor Council, with regards specifically to this project, this is looking at the resurfacing of Farquhar from basically Bloomfield West to Los Alo Boulevard. And independent of the work that has been underway with Golden State Water, there's, there's some failure occurring within the pavement system in that segment. And there's concern that staff has with that condition and the ability to successfully repair that. And to add to that, there's concern with the potential increase in traffic, though temporary, the increase in traffic that could occur with the major trunk sewer line replacement project that will be starting in the summer of 2020, and the potential for rerouting of traffic that could impact Farquhar and our residents within them, within that area utilizing Farquhar more than they do today. So this is coming before you because of the timing and when we have to bring that item in order to commit those funds going forward. Specific to Golden State Water, their work in Farquhar has primarily been on the south side of Farquhar or the eastbound lanes. We have walked the project with their team, and they will be doing a grinding and overlay of that. And every area where they've been working within trenching, within that segment, they will be doing a full grinding overlay of that west, excuse me, eastbound lane. So the entire, basically, south side within those areas where they've been trenching will be completely repaved. And then it also, if I could really quick, going into the apartment row area, what you see there is all temporary. We have been working with Golden State Water. They are later in their schedule than what they had identified to us. We are following up with them regarding that. But we've walked that entire area with them. The city engineer, myself, walked it, and they will be doing a significant amount of repaving in that area as well. Some of that will go all the way to center line of the road, full width. But at least at a minimum, all of the trenching areas with a certain amount of distance on either side will be completely repaved, and will be, and the concrete as well. There's areas that will be completely cut out and repaved and restored. So what, what is experienced out there today is all temporary in nature. We've also mentioned to them about the fact that we want to see all of that completed before any of the second phase of work occurs, which would be the actual connections to the individual units at that site, within that project.
So the work in this item specifically, that doesn't have anything to do with any work that Golden State Water would be doing on Farquhar?
Yeah, this, this is completely separate from any of the work that Golden State Water be doing. It would be, it would, there is one segment within this area that we would be addressing, because there is some work west of Bloomfield, some trenching work that occurred. But we're looking at a complete curb-to-curb grinding and overlay from Bloomfield all the way Los Alo Boulevard.
Okay, I just don't want to, I want to make sure that we're not spending our resources on Golden State Water.
Absolutely not. They're, they're going to go out and do their work. That may reduce our cost, depending on the work. We'll have to assess that once they're completed.
That's what I wanted to hear. Okay, with that, I'll move in.
Thank you.
Second.
Murphy, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posed? Passes. Thank you. Okay, that's it for consent. So the next item on the public hearing. So there's chairs up here, folks. Why don't you come and sit? And the hearing hopefully will be interesting for you. Come on, don't be shy.
Mayor, before you
Yes.
get into the public hearing, my wife sits on the Planning Commission, and this particular item was before the Planning Commission and was turned down by the Planning Commission. We were not aware that it was going to be appealed, although it was done in a timely fashion. And I've had some discussion with her regarding their rationale for turning it down. So I think in the essence of being forthright, I'm going to recuse myself from participating in the discussion and the decision that the council will make.
Okay, understood. Thank you, Councilmember Gross.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I'm just going to hand this one over to do the staff report to the Development Services Director, Les Johnson.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, the item before you this evening is an appeal of the Planning Commission denial decision of conditional use permit 1808, which is a medical office proposed within the general commercial zone. The applicant submitted the, the application, again, to establish a medical office use within an existing building at 10-900 Los Alamos Boulevard, Suite 160. Now, that property is located within our general commercial zoning district. And in that district in particular, those type of activities or medical office activities are permitted, except for properties where the parcel is connected or abuts a arterial. In this case, the subject property itself abuts catella. So there's the requirement for a conditional use permit. The existing building is 6,375 feet in size. It is currently vacant. It has been vacant for about two and a half years, and the previous tenant was Keller Williams, and there were a number of realtors based out of that office. The property owner has been in communication with staff and has stated that they have tried diligently to fill that space with a retail use and have been unsuccessful in doing so. The application coming forward has identified the site would be occupied by a medical care group. It has not been specifically identified as to who that care group would, would be. The application did not identify any specific information with regards to the number of doctors, exam rooms, et cetera. There is a concept drawing that they gave us, but nothing definitive. There was a parking analysis provided with the application, and that analysis did conclude that there is sufficient parking to accommodate the proposed use. The existing town center shopping center area has a mix of land uses within it. There are restaurants, retail shops, a number of services being provided, and there's also two existing medical offices, a dentist and a chiropractor. And there's a few photos of that existing building as it sits today. These two exhibits here are for general reference. On the right-hand side is the town center shopping area. You can see the property there in the center. It's oriented, north being to the, to the left there. There are five buildings, I believe, on that site, one of them being a two-story building, all the rest being single-story, and most of them being multi-tenant buildings. And there's a number of pocket areas of parking throughout the, throughout the property, as well as parking up in the north, the upper-left portion of up in the north, the upper-left portion of the drawing there. On the left-hand side is the conceptual floor plan that was submitted with the application. Again, it was conceptual, showing a lobby, some patient exam rooms, and offices. The two exhibits here are for reference regarding zoning and general plan, land use designations. To the left is the zoning where you see the commercial general, or general commercial, excuse me, zoning, the property highlighted in yellow. I would like to point out there is commercial office zone property to the east and community facility properties as well to the east. And then the general plan land use map, again, the property highlighted in yellow there, you can see the mixed-use designation that's identified in our general plan of all the blue, and then you can see further to the east, the medical or professional office designated, excuse me, designated areas, and then further to the east in the crosshatched area is the specific plan for the Los Alamos Memorial Center, Medical Center. The planning commission considered this item during their January 23 meeting. They conducted a proper public hearing. They received the staff report, and there was a number of comments that were also received. Within the staff report, we did identify that there was some concern with parking availability during peak times, and also noted that the potential for medical office in that area could be a positive in supporting neighboring businesses. Staff did recommend approval to the planning commission. The commission, during their deliberation, noted concern with really three key topics, the first being the lack of operational information that being provided. Again, no real identification of what medical activity specifically would be occurring, how many doctors, exam rooms, et cetera. Second, they did express concern with maintaining a strong retail, commercial use within the general commercial zoning district. And then third, also identified an interest in supporting the general plan town center land use plan. After deliberation and discussion, the commission unanimously voted by a 6-0 vote to deny the request and directed staff to bring forward a resolution, according to which we did during the February meeting. The applicant, following the February meeting and the decision rendered, did timely submit an appeal application to the city. A proper hearing notice has been provided for the consideration of the appeal. I did want to also note that there were some additional correspondence recently received that have been distributed out to you earlier today, a letter from an attorney as well as a broker. And also, I did furnish you this evening, after talking with the mayor, for your general reference, the general plan land use map for your consideration. And with that, that concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor, we also, I'd like the city attorney to just kind of lay out a foundation for the city council. Couple of council members have asked us what the parameters are for a discussion tonight, and so want the city attorney to give that to the full city council.
Sure, if it's helpful to set the stage here, this is a de novo appeal of a decision that was made by the planning commission. In terms of your assessment of the commission's decision, you're not limited simply to the record developed by the planning commission or deciding whether or not you think they got it right, per se. This really is an opportunity for the city council to take in the staff's report, any testimony from the applicant, correspondence that was received today, and to take a fresh look at the application itself and make a determination as a city council as to whether or not you feel the CUP can be properly supported at this location. So you have a fair amount of latitude in terms of deciding whether or not you would choose to affirm the planning commission's denial of the project. You may choose to approve the project and grant the CUP alternatively, and in so doing, you may also choose to add conditions to that approval. So again, this is a de novo hearing, and you have a wide amount of latitude when you consider the potential merits of the CUP application.
So for clarification, so in this hearing, these proceedings, we then kind of act as the planning commission. What we've entrusted to them, this is that second look, is that kind of a fair way to summarize it?
Yeah, it could almost even better be characterized as a first impression of it. You're really putting fresh eyes on this to try to make a determination as to whether or not the CUP is appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the city attorney or for staff? And I think the procedure is open the public hearing? Is that?
If you'd like to take questions of staff first and then open it to the public.
So I do have some questions for staff. Les, if you can go back a few pages, one more there. Okay, so where the proposed office building is on the right, the item with the arrow in the red, the parking that's on the street there, what street is that?
Pine.
Pine. So is that part of the traffic or that parking study? Were those spaces factored in?
Yes, the parking study includes, there's perpendicular parking along Pine and Florista. I believe it's Florista, the north there.
Those are, that's public parking, not private parking, right? So is that the normal case where we would, if someone were to build an apartment, I know we went through a few of those, it was all required off-street parking. So this is not off-street parking then? This is?
It is off-street parking, Mayor. What transpired was, a number of years back, there was an entitlement associated with this center, and where there was acknowledgement and recognition of that parking as being accounted for as part of the center's parking.
Okay, so all the public parking surrounding that?
Parcel?
Yes, the parking, the perpendicular parking that's shown on that exhibit have been accounted for with previous entitlements and previous parking analysis of the subject.
And that would be the same for Florista, the parking over there as well?
That is correct.
And the other question, I think I answered the question part of this. You explained that because it is medical use, it requires a CUP. If this were put to use as retail, as permitted in the zone, there would not be any need for a CUP. It could be administratively approved by you, given the usage, or also submitted to the planning commission, depending on how intense the usage is, right?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So the reason why I went to the planning commission is because it's medical?
It's specific to medical in addition to that because the property, not the building, but the property actually fronts on Cotella. If the property were not fronting on Cotella per the zoning, it does not require a conditional use permit either.
Okay. I think those are my questions. Mark, please?
Sure, and this is for Les also. The other two medical offices that are in this facility, what, did they get a conditional use permit, or how are they in that facility?
They've been there a number of years. I don't know exactly the history of the entitlement, but per the current zoning, because they're not on an arterial, and I don't believe that that parcel, if I remember correctly, abuts either Los Alamos or, well, I'm sorry, it does, it does but Cotella, it does wrap in that property. Unfortunately, Councilmember, I don't know, they've been there a number of years, and I don't know the exact history on the entitlement for those.
Okay, and then as far as our decision, how long do we have to make this decision if we decide to make suggestions to the applicant or decide, you know, we want to render a decision at a later date? What is our deadline?
Well, it's at your purview tonight. If there was a need for, you know, additional information or either from us or from the applicant, you certainly could continue the matter if you so desire to do so. If you did desire to continue, we'd ask that you leave the hearing open, so that could be, you know, further considered later on. But it's really not a time-sensitive matter that has to be addressed today, but there is an overall limitation for the consideration.
City Attorney?
Yeah, if I could please just add to that, per our code, action must be taken on an appeal within 90 days of the application being filed, which I believe puts us to June 12, 2019, on a date certain by which a decision needs to be made and recorded.
Okay, that's all the questions I have for now. Thank you.
So I guess to follow up on Councilmember Turco's, the medical usage is on the second floor, the other, the existing, correct?
There's a dental office that's first floor that actually faces to Florista, and I believe the chiropractor's on the second floor.
Okay, but so the commercial zone, retail is no more than 15% office, right? Non-retail use?
For first floor, yes.
Okay, so, and I did ask you this question, that 6,300, whatever it was, that is less than 15%?
Yeah, I believe when we had calculated the entire square footage for the center, it came in under 15%.
But again, if you factor in the other existing medical usage, which is non-retail, does that exceed the 15%?
Well, with the, with the way that zoning code is written, the medical office activity is under a different category from general office. So the general office category is an outright permitted use up with a cap of 15% within a center. Medical office uses automatically require the conditional use permit with the frontage, so it is calculated, it could go above and beyond the 15%.
Okay, so it's not limited to 15%? Okay.
Correct.
Thank you for that. Okay, if there's no other questions, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. And certainly, any member wishes to speak? Please, step forward. Thank you. And there's no time limit, right? Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. My name is Peter Blyde. I'm representing the owners of Los Alamos Plaza, excuse me, and it's a pleasure to see you this evening. I'll start by simply just putting into the record the purpose of our appeal, which you may have actually read, but it's very straightforward. The proposed medical office use complies with the applicable requirements and supports the required findings for a conditional use permit as provided in the Los Alamos Municipal Code. We disagree with the planning commission's denial of our conditional use permit request and the findings put forth in Resolution 19-03. The planning commission's decision should be reversed, and the requested CUP should be granted. Now, that sounds great. The question, of course, is, well, why do we believe that? I think that it's important to remember that we all rely on professionals. Whatever it is that we do, we rely on professionals to do things that are specialties, that are areas of expertise that we perhaps don't have. In this case, we start working with your planning staff, who are professionals. We provide an application. The owners of the plaza hired me to come in and review the code and figure out what made sense and how to justify the application, because it is in fact a conditional use, which means that you have to justify what your request is. When staff did their work, which is done professionally and timely as it should be, they came up with five findings in their resolution of approval. That's what was presented to the planning commission on January 23 in compliance with the code. The planning commission saw things differently. Some might say they were a little bit myopic or focused on perhaps the wrong thing, because their discussion of findings was very, very weak. And so they challenged staff, I think, to come up with findings for denial. And so when a resolution came back for denial, we're down from five findings for approval down to two for denial. I think that kind of the behind-the-scenes logic is, if we don't approve something here, retail is going to show up. And as much as that would be fantastic, my client has worked with three different brokerage agencies over the course of the last three and a half years since this suite has been vacant. And our most recent one provided a letter, hopefully you all have this letter and have had a chance to read it, and they outline their efforts and the feedback that they've consistently gotten over the last couple of years. And that feedback is, this is a fantastic center. Everybody would like to be in Los Alamos at this particular intersection. The challenge is, this building, where it's located, and its design and shape and its architecture, don't encourage retailers. And honestly, if it weren't for the caveat in the code where this parcel has frontage on Los Alamos as well as Cotella, this building, if it were on a standalone parcel, we're not even having a lot of the discussion that we're having. This building's standalone in the back. It was used as an office for Keller Williams for a number of years. Prior to that, it was an office for Hoff's Hut, who's still here, just in the restaurant form, no longer the headquarters there. And it's been a couple of different restaurants. So that particular building was never a good retail store, it never had retail tenants beyond, if you consider a restaurant a retail use. So my client is trying to continue the use of the building. Obviously, a vacancy in the center of your property is never good, particularly a 6,300 square foot one. And so with all of the marketing efforts that have gone on with the various brokers that have been involved, the only consistent groups to show interest have been medical office use. The city has done a really great job of developing the medical-specific plan down the street. There is an attraction where people are seeing, look, there's some synergy here that we can develop, where doctors want to be somewhere near the hospital so they can see their patients, and then they can also make a run down to the street to the hospital without completely disrupting their day. So I think it's important to recognize that this request makes sense. It's logical, it's simple. This isn't really complicated stuff. And we'll circle back and rely on our professionals that have evaluated this. Planning staff evaluated it and said, you know what, this makes sense, this works. Your code requires that when there's something discretionary going on, that traffic, parking be evaluated by professionals. So early in the project, we brought on a licensed engineering firm who did an analysis. They looked at the code, and then they also looked at various manuals and best practices and policies that their field, the engineering field, uses to evaluate. That study has recently been updated, and you have a copy of that as well. But the findings both times when this was evaluated by the engineering firm is that parking is adequate. I think there was one half-hour segment in the middle of the day, on the busiest day that they could forecast for a medical office use, where there were like a shortfall of five parking spaces. And that's well within the acceptable range for anybody I've ever dealt with on a, you know, on a parking situation. The vast majority of the time, there continues to be excess parking. The other thing that happens is, my client has said, look, I need not just a planner, not just a traffic engineer, I also want my attorneys to take a look at this. You guys have received a lengthy letter from the law firm of Loeb and Loeb, and I believe most of you, hopefully all of you, have had a chance to read it. It's pretty substantial, and it outlines a bunch of specific reasons that the planning commission was maybe a little bit off in their determination. And that's not to say that this is a rebuke, that we're requesting, you know, that the planning commission be chastised. Volunteers are important. Every city needs them. You know, I do volunteer work, I'm sure you guys do too, you're in politics. This is all part of what we do to make our communities better. But sometimes, well-intentioned people go down the wrong path. Denying a medical office use here doesn't make retail show up. The trends for retail are going downward. You've got a room full of students here. I bet every, most of these families are on Amazon or eBay or some version of online shopping regularly, and most of you probably are too. The brick-and-mortar stores, the demand for them is decreasing. And then meanwhile, the trends for medical office use is they are looking for opportunities to be in a mixed-use type of environment. Your general plan actually specifically calls out our property and a few around it for mixed use. Now, that can mean different things, but essentially, we'll break it down real simple on dictionary definition. It's a mix of divergent or different uses which creates interest, which creates traffic, which creates synergy. A medical office use here will bring in well-paid professionals who are going to do the medical work. It's going to bring in a whole host of patients who then are going to say, oh, there's a dry cleaner there, oh, I can get my nails done, oh, I can grab lunch while I'm here. There's a synergy and an overflow that staff acknowledged in the first staff report back in January and said, look, we anticipate that this will actually support the retail in the center. And that, of course, is what my client, the owner of the shopping center, sees as an opportunity. Not only can they fill a large vacant space in their property, they also can help support their other clients and other tenants in the property itself. So we've covered the broker's letter, the attorney's letter, the specific challenges of this particular building. Thank you, Les. As you can see, it's set several hundred feet back from the frontage on Los Alamos Boulevard, and it's completely screened from the Cotella side. You've got Starbucks and a couple other stores along the frontage. You've got Starbucks and a couple of other stores along the frontage there. So, it's really, it's only frontage is on Pine, which I think we can all agree is not an arterial of any particular value, other than it provides a back entry for a lot of parking and a lot of customers to come and go from the area. So, I think it's important to say, look, sometimes the code is very specific and sometimes it is also created purposely to allow for gray area. Sometimes it allows for conditional approvals, such as what we're requesting, where we say, okay, this, it doesn't exactly fit, you know, square peg in a round hole. But this is something that the greater good, this is supporting the greater good. This is something that we think makes sense. It's logical. It's reasonable and definitely doesn't create any sort of nuisance, any sort of problem. The most specific thing that we've discussed is parking. Parking has been addressed by a professional engineering firm a couple of different times. Staff has looked at that and said, yeah, that makes sense. That's logical. We can agree with those findings. So, really, the only thing that I see, that I was left with from the Planning Commission discussion, and I had anecdotal conversation with Commissioner DeBolt, and I said, what would it take for you, sir, to support a project in this space? And he said, bring retail. And I said, I would love to bring retail. Believe me, that, that avoids a use permit process. Staff can look at it and sign it off basically over the counter. It's super simple to bring in retail, if retail is willing to come. And obviously, we're at a highly desirable intersection. And if retail would come here, they'd already be here. We've had a vacancy for several years. And so, we're, we're trying to fill a hole and establish a new tenant here. And the specifics, as much as those are super desirable, we have a tenant who's executed a letter of intent. They've provided it to the broker, who has provided it to the ownership group. They're all working on what the terms of that agreement are. The reason that my client, the property owner, has been proactive is because they are quiet, the tenant themselves, they're like, look, we're not ready to go public with a particular location. And we would like you guys to go get this use permit for us because it helps us with our speed to market. Once we agree to sign a lease, we can go a lot quicker if there's a process already in place that doesn't involve something that's a little bit willy-nilly, like a conditional use permit. A lot of tenants shy away from them, which is great because it gives me projects to work on. But it's kind of a weird little world and planners, you know, we fill that gap. So, I think it's important to just say, look, this is simple. This makes sense. It's logical. We can make the findings. Your staff has made the findings already. And as much as you may want to support the commission, sometimes they're going to make mistakes and this is an opportunity to correct that. So, I just simply request approval of the Resolution 19-03 as it was written on January 23rd, not the February version. And I'd love to answer questions and specifics if you would like to dig into the letters from either the broker or the attorneys, or anything more specific about the operational use. But at the end of the day, we're requesting a use permit for a use, not a specific tenant. So, whether or not I've got, you know, something really flashy or something very mundane, we're literally talking about just a medical office. And to touch on something that came up at the very start of this hearing, my client is amenable to limiting the types of medical uses. That was discussed during the Planning Commission hearing. And so, if, if urgent care or surgery centers, which were one of the concerns that were kind of thrown around a little bit by some of the commissioners, those are things that my client is willing to say, okay, if that is a problem, we can agree to a condition that says, we'll limit it to not include those in our medical uses. They do have a medical group that wants to take the space, and I believe it'd be one that'd be very welcome here in Los Alamos. But of course, that depends on you guys. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And if you could stand by, I mean, go ahead and have a seat. We might ask some questions of you. So, back to the council. How about some discussion thoughts, questions, questions of staff? Anybody want to go first?
Anybody else?
Oh, yeah, big pardon. So, thank you, Mayor Pretend. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this in the public hearing? We can hold it open if there's more questions as well. So, okay, with that, the council, do you have any questions?
I had a couple of questions of the speaker, real quick.
Mr. Blyde?
Real quick.
Blyde?
Yeah, very, very simple, but often confused.
No problem. So, what time of medical practice is this? Can you divulge that?
It's general practice. They're, the, the group that we're talking to is a, is a regional care group. And they would look at their formula of doctors and what's available and what's closest, and then they would put together a group of doctors into this particular location.
Can you project how many employees there would be in the building?
I can't yet. I don't know.
And hours of operation?
I, I would assume they would be fairly straightforward, in line with most medical. I mean, I think the retailers around us would be open many more hours than, than the medical office.
Okay.
You know, I think that was maybe one of the concerns the commissioners had about an urgent care facility because sometimes they run really late.
Or surgery or any number of, and then obviously, you can't project how many patients would be in the facility because you don't know how many employees would be in the facility.
Right. The fortunate thing is that that's, that's where we can rely on the, the traffic engineers, the parking folks that did the study, is they take national documentation data on square footage and medical uses in general, just generically speaking. And so, they can do projections based on those things and the square footage involved. And that's the driving factor in their traffic studies.
But once we grant the CUP, we lose all control and then we just trust that you're going to do what's best for that area, correct? As far as granting the CUP, we lose all control as far as how many employees, how many patients, hours of operation, yeah.
Intensity of the use.
Right, the intensity of the use. Once the CUP is granted, we no longer have a say in the intensity of the use. You could have 50 employees, you could have 10 employees. We can't dictate that after, after the CUP is granted.
I believe that would be consistent with all of the retailers.
Right. We're just trying to do our due diligence because we've got to go back to our businesses and, and neighbors and everybody else and explain to them why we've overpopulated a really crowded shopping center already. So, I just want to ask some questions so I know.
And the importance of the conditional use permit is it allows you to place conditions on a project. If it becomes a nuisance for any reason, obviously, code enforcement can issue citations. And of course, staff can always refer an active conditional use permit back to Planning Commission or council to discuss a problem. If there's a problem that's consistent and is, has a difficulty being resolved, really easy to bring it back and have a discussion about it. So, I wouldn't feel like you have your hands tied and you can't ever talk, talk to them or talk about them again. It's a very fluid process.
Would your client be willing to require that all the employees from that office park in his own parking lot that he owns across the street?
That is actually part of their lease agreement.
Okay.
Yeah, and I mean, you can see, they have a dedicated chunk of property that I'm sure is worth a lot more if it weren't a parking lot.
Sure.
But they have it set aside to help support the shopping center because obviously, parking's very important for not only the retail and the restaurants, but also any other tenants that take occupancy there. So, yes, that is already in place. That's part of their lease documents that they are working from.
Right. I mean, when we have people coming into Starbucks or she's sitting and can't find a parking spot and then leave, that doesn't do us any good either. So, just want to be clear on what the use is. Okay, thank you.
Sure, I have a couple of questions. Good evening.
Hello.
You mentioned at the outset during your comments that the design does not encourage retail. And I'm just wondering whether your client has considered modifying the design or upgrading the property or any number of things to encourage a retail tenant or a restaurant or anything like that?
Yeah, it's actually the, the best thing I can maybe do, and I'll, I'll speak generically, but the, the broker actually outlined a couple of specific things about the restaurant users and what's the, the walk-in, sit-down restaurant demand is shrinking. And this building is more designed for that. It was a restaurant and a couple of different things in its past. But the, the trends for what they look for now is a relatively small indoor restaurant footprint with a larger outdoor patio-type area. So, in this particular case, you'd be shrinking the building to create a patio. And at least at this point, it's not something that they've wanted to do. From the, from the retail side, one of the things that kind of comes up is there is no, there's no loading dock, there's no natural place for like a large loading zone or unloading zone. And Pine Street, with the way that it's configured, doesn't really lend itself to that. We'd be having to try to negotiate to remove on-street parking, which of course is going the opposite direction of what we want to do, which is to support parking for the entire area. So, there have been discussions about whether that or not that makes sense. And I think if, if tenants were interested, if they looked at the location and they said, you know what, if you guys would rework this building and open up windows and then a retailer would show up or a restaurant would show up, I think they would be willing to do it. But after three years of kind of knocking, banging their head, head against the wall, the answer keeps coming back like, look, this is office. Medical office makes the most sense, so let's try to make that happen.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Questions?
Yeah, I also have some questions regarding modifying. So, you have considered windows? Just full disclosure, I worked for Keller Williams in that building.
Oh, so you know it well.
Yeah. But so, it is very dark, you know, and I, I can see we're going to have challenges on the retail side without, without some real modifications, opening it up, up some. But what I really wanted to ask you was, it seemed in watching the Planning Commission's meeting that you ran into the inability to guarantee what was going to be there. And that, I thought that was your highest hurdle. And so, I was going to ask you, wouldn't it be possible to come up with, let's say, a maximum allowed density that, based on this square footage and what an average doctor's office is and how many doctors you plan to have there and what kind of office they need, what you need for reception? Couldn't you flesh out without naming anybody what, what this would look like so, so maybe they could consider, okay, based upon this, is the parking reasonable? Would that, would that be possible?
I can't say it's impossible.
Okay.
I mean, I, it would be, I think it would be a creative endeavor and it would require iterations and working with staff and whoever else would need to be involved, obviously the ownership. And then, of course, I know our tenant would have to, they'd have to project what they think is going to happen. That's certainly a conversation we can have. I don't want to say there's no way we can do that. But I wouldn't want to, because I, I see you tying that to parking. And I think that the parking is really handled. We have engineering firms that do this for a living who've analyzed it and they said, look, parking's not going to be an issue. So, I'm, I'm a little concerned that we're trying to tie it back to parking when parking has been asked and answered to a cer, to a large extent by parking professionals that are required to analyze the thing by your code. So, I'm kind of like, why are we still talking about parking if that's been put to bed, so to speak?
If I may be blunt, because they're hired by you to come to a conclusion in a lot of citizens' minds.
I'm sorry?
They're hired, the parking people are hired by you, correct?
My client hired them, yes.
To come to a conclusion.
Yes.
And that is going to cause many citizens to question that, that finding.
Okay.
I, I, as I said, I worked in the building. When Keller Williams was there, parking was a problem. When we left, it's no longer a problem.
Okay.
They used to blame the realtors. I didn't know there were that many of us, but with people coming and going, I guess we, we did take up a lot of space. We also took up some upstairs space, so we doubled really the size of the office.
Okay.
But my, my original question was, it, it wouldn't seem that hard to, just given 6,500 square feet, to say, okay, it, we can fit, maximum we could fit is these many doctors in these many offices. Let's assume each doctor gets an office and needs two or three waiting rooms and a reception area. Wouldn't, wouldn't that be possible to do to, to overcome what I saw as the Planning Commission's objections?
It certainly could. And like I said, it, that's a conversation that we can, I can circle back with my client and I can circle back with the, the prospective tenant and say, look, this is what the city really wants. Can you help us provide some actual numbers? I was a little honestly disappointed that the Planning Commission was so rank and file in their denial because I felt like it was very strongly guided by Commissioner DeBolt, who told me flat out, I don't want to see medical office here ever.
I see.
Aside from findings, aside from anything else, and I believe a couple of the other commissioners basically felt the same way, I want to see retail here. Our, my, my client would be happy to have retail here. That would have saved him a lot of years of vacant space and he would not be paying me and the engineer and all these other people that are involved. It's just not realistic. So, it's a matter of, okay, let's accept where we're at and move forward. I mean, your, your specific plan, not specific plan, excuse me, your general plan talks about the concern of only chasing sales tax revenues via retail. I mean, it's specifically mentioned, and I know that there, there are challenges and there are concerns related to that. Cities all over Southern California are having some of these same conversations about shrinking sales tax dollars. How do we do it? How do we replace it? How do we bolster it? And it's, I mean, it's a good, healthy conversation to have because it's realistic. The trends are national and they're very real. And chances are, brick and mortar is going to get weaker before it levels off and stabilizes. So, what do we do? How do we resolve that? And I mean, you guys as the leaders of the city obviously have to carry more of that load than some of us do. So, how do we, how do we cure vacancies? How do we support property owners that want to have tenants but need a special permit to make that happen? I mean, it'd be great. I'd love to have your help making this happen. And if you need us to dig a little deeper and try to get a little bit more information, if, if we can get our tenant to say, look, go ahead and put our name out there in public. So far, they haven't been willing to do that. And that does tie my hands to a certain extent.
In, in my mind, the name is, is not the important factor. It's just, who's ever going to lease this space, I'm going to, I'm pretty sure is going to have some professionalism in, and know what that space will allow them to do.
Sure.
Okay, and that, that's, that was what I was suggesting.
Yeah. And they, like I said, they are a regional care group. I mean, you can drive around some of the South Bay cities and you see them in other locations in other cities. So, they're, they are a known operator and they are one that is, I'm sure would be welcome if I were to say, this is who it is. And if it is tied to parking, you know, we can explore that a little further, although I think, and I mean, please, Mr. Johnson, correct me if I'm wrong, I think staff has accepted not only the first, but also the secondary parking analysis that's been provided as adequate.
Okay, thank you. Okay, please sit down. I'll have a few questions for staff. I might call you back up. So, Les, I guess if you can, or maybe Mary Louisa. I remember when the medical-specific plan was approved and one of the, the kind of the metrics of that space, that if we were to put four In-N-Out burgers on that footprint, it would be the same amount of traffic. And it got me to kind of thinking, so, a space like this, retail, is there some formula you have that says a retail space this big, notwithstanding location and all the other geographical constraints, it would produce this much sales tax in a year? Is there any kind of formula like that?
There, there, there's nothing hard, fast that you can, you can say, this is it. But based on, I did a little bit of looking today from our HGL reports and based on what we see and, and have seen, and with this size of a, of a building, you're probably in the $2 to $3 a square foot annual sales tax coming in. So, it's not a significant revenue generator for us, but you know, that's, you're probably right in that ballpark, again, comparatively looking at a few other retail type. We don't have a whole lot in that size. We, it's amazing how we have a lot that are much smaller and then we have a, a few that are quite a bit bigger, like Gonal, that really are big contributors. But it was a little bit difficult, but I would say in that $2 to $3 square foot range is probably.
That's a, that's a good number, just as a, as a rule, I guess, a, a gauge, right? And I guess the other part would be, would it be a fair assessment that says one use from a lease per square foot might be more value than another usage? So, let me, let me try, a nonprofit wants to lease a warehouse somewhere, they might get it a pretty darn good value, right? Maybe a, a dollar a square foot or something like that. And then something that might be more desirable would get a higher.
Absolutely.
Okay, now, in the gauge of things, retail versus medical use, is there a difference that we see in terms of lease per square foot?
Well, like, like with a lot of, a lot of uses, location's key. So, I mean, you're, you're, a lot of your, your driver is going to be that particular use. Are they dependent upon like, like the Los Alamos Medical Center or proximity to it? Sometimes your lease is going to be higher if it's a specialty doctor that needs to have close proximity for surgery purposes. Otherwise, a lot of, like a dentist or other, I don't know. Otherwise, a lot of, like a dentist or other, I don't wanna say ancillary, but other, maybe smaller, like an optometrist, dentist, chiropractor, they're pretty much anywhere. And I think that, that a lot of times those retail rates are much lower and, and not quite as, not quite as prevalent. But it really just depends on what that, from what my experience, it depends on the proximity and the type of doctor and what their focus is.
Okay, so three more, three most important things about real estate, right? But in the center complex, before your time, in the back, there's a dentist that went in there. And I guess, given a retail use versus dentist, would the, was a dentist paying more or, or less? I don't know, this is probably a, you wouldn't know. Excuse me, you wouldn't know the answer to that, but.
I only have a little bit of experience from a number of years ago when I actually had a small business and at least at that point in time, in my experience, it didn't matter. The, usually a lot of times, the, you know, the, the center owner, just unless you were, unless it was square footage, like if you were an anchor tenant, sometimes they worked with you because they knew you would draw others, you know, others in. But other than that, when you got into the smaller to medium size, it didn't matter. It was X per square foot, didn't matter what you were doing.
Okay. And I, I guess it just seems to me and Mr., how do you say it, Blight? Blight. In, in some sense, you know, the free market, right? If, if you're asking too high a lease rate, then maybe that's why you can't attract it. So maybe there's a sweet spot in that. So I'm, I'm having a little bit of a, you know, a thoughtful introspection as to really where it is because certainly I know that from a, like in a, I may wanna buy an expensive car, but I can't afford it, so I might have to afford something less. And so maybe in the case of a retail person, maybe a retail organization, maybe they can't move in because of the, the value that you've placed on the property. So this is where, you know, are, are we entertaining something that provides a artificial value, given the, the zoning that you said it is? So this is where I struggle. So I, I read the letter from the broker and if you can, maybe step up and, and talk a little bit about how you determine valuation of the square footage and what is retail willing to pay?
Well, since I'm not the broker, I can't speak specifically to what the rates are.
So maybe, yeah, maybe not to go too deep into that, because I don't wanna have you commit to anything. I'm just trying to.
Yeah, no, that's fair. What I can say is that the, the reason that landlords like my client don't lease, most of them don't lease in-house on their own, is they rely on heavy data from commercial brokers. You know, commercial brokerage is a specialty. Mr. Murphy? Sorry, I can't read if I have my glasses on and then if I, you know, you know the deal. Are you in residential real estate?
Apartment building.
Apartment buildings, okay. So it's a, you know, there's specialties, subspecialties within real estate. And so what happens is the ownership has to rely on their brokers very heavily. So the, the brokerage, and they did provide me with some fairly dense background work on what the market rates are for the target market in the area. And they give guidance to the ownership. The ownership, of course, is free to disregard. You know, you can always try to sell something for way more than it's worth, but chances are, you're not gonna sell it. I can assure you that the ownership of this property would greatly prefer to have a lower paying tenant in this space as opposed to a vacancy. Now, you're right, there's, there is a break even on both sides of that negotiation. But the only consistent interest in this location has been a medical office type use who doesn't need signage because they're a destination location. They don't need visibility from the street because there really isn't any. You know, Keller Williams certainly was not relying on their signage to pull in customers. They were advertising and marketing and all kinds of stuff. And then maybe every once in a while, you get a walk-in, but it's gonna be rare. And a medical office is also very much the same type of operation. A couple of the points, the specific notes on this particular space on the retail perspective, I went back through the broker's letter. And because it's kind of an unusual sized space, it's a little over 6,000 square feet. It's a little bit larger than many retailers are interested in. They want smaller because they have to pay fairly decent rates per square foot. The ones in the three to 1,000 square foot range, and this is relying on the broker's expertise, is they want a, a center where it's anchored by a grocery store, somebody that generates heavy traffic, day in, day out, rain, shine, no matter what. And we simply don't have that. There are some, obviously, some things that generate traffic. I mean, Starbucks is probably busy as many hours as they're open. You know, the shoe store, the nail salon, Hoff's Hut, I know does a great business there still. Are they the only ones still in existence, in operation? I mean, I know that they're shrinking their numbers. But it's, it's important to recognize that this is kind of a unique location and the rules, the, the city's ordinances actually kind of tie the hands a little bit of the property owner because the parcel itself has this frontage and it kinda creates an additional hurdle. And in this case, the conditional use permit allows you guys to modify it a little bit. And so we're hoping that that's what you guys can do. You can see your way clear to addressing that kind of odd situation and look at it and say, well, you know what, maybe this is the right thing to do. But we don't have a grocery anchor. And as you guys know, these older, larger shopping centers are kind of in a weird stage. You know, there's these really big vacancies where grocery chains are consolidating and you're, you have less and less grocery, grocery stores per, you know, square mile. They're, they're reducing. Brick and mortar retail is also in a, in a pullback phase. So it's a matter of, okay, how can we plug the gaps and keep centers occupied and active, which of course supports retail and supports sales tax dollars and everything kinda works together. So I know that was a long answer to your question.
No, I appreciate it. So I, I think the thing is, and something you said about the brokers and they target the market for the area. So I guess in, you know, kinda bluntly, if your prices are too high, maybe they're too high and, and that's why you can't get the, the kinda tenant that's permitted by, you know, administratively, the, the retail. So, and, and I know it's a, I don't know how long the landowner owns, when he purchased, they'd purchased this property, but you know, again, one of those other sayings in real estate is buyer beware, right? You get what you get and there's a risk on that. So, and unfortunately, I think in, you know, the, the scheme of things, there are things they may acquire that are winners and things that are, are losers. And, and I think this is the part where I hear what you're saying and I really have empathy. I, I know that area, I've, I've walked through it, I've, I've dined there, and it is a really unique configuration. I do understand about lack of loading docks, whether it's for a restaurant or even just a retailer that needs to get product into their showroom and warehousing and all that. So it, it, I don't know, I don't know where we're gonna go with this, but it just seems like parking issue and concerns aside, because I think it goes back to the intensity of the usage. And I, of course, following the code, you will come up with a formula of how many parking spaces. But if one were to put, I'll say, smaller, some kind of a, maybe exam room or larger waiting rooms, it may change the intensity of use. So I understand the science behind the parking and following the formula, but it, it does become, I think, a concern because I have been there where I can't, even circling around, I can't find a parking spot just to, you know, go to dine at one of the, the local places. And I know you are dependent on the public parking, which I guess is an entitlement that goes with that. But if there's a way maybe to squeeze more parking out of the lot that the owner owns, maybe a small structure, it might change the whole discussion as well. But with that, I think Councilmember Hasselberg has a few more questions.
Okay, and if I can just, just real quickly, just one second. This is not a, a short-term or a recent owner purchase. This particular group has owned the property for nearly 30 years.
Okay.
So they're not looking for a quick cash out type.
No, I understand.
You know, packet full of tenants and sell it again. They've been here, they've invested.
But I imagine then with the Keller Williams leaving, they could've gotten the same kind of usage in the same footprint without, I would imagine, a CUP, right? It, it, there must've been some approval of that type of usage with that intensity.
That would be a general office use, I think, which would be allowed by right, up to that 15% threshold that we talked about.
Yeah.
If I got that code right.
Yeah. Councilmember Sherko?
Sure. So I just wanna point out, we're not here to, to pass judgment on the planning commission's decision, say whether they were right or wrong. We're a totally fresh set of eyes on the application itself.
Agreed.
And, you know, just wanna point out one other thing. The, the staff, city staff, and they do a great job. I, I watched the planning commission meeting video and I just wanna make a note that they slightly supported approval. And I think that distinction is, is important. The concern I have, and I know that, that they also had that concern, is that we just don't have much information about what's going to go in there. Medical is a very broad term and there's probably, you know, 20 different types of medical groups or, or practices that that could potentially encompass. And I think, were we to approve it as currently described so generally, I, I think we might be doing a disservice to our residents because, you know, six months down the road, it may be extreme traffic coming through there, affecting the businesses, affecting our residents. And so I'm, I'm concerned about that. And I wonder whether your client's given any thought to maybe fashioning some conditions themselves where they would exclude, you know, certain types of medical uses for that facility. I like Councilmember Murphy's suggestions that, that there, there be, put a, a limit on the number of rooms or, or employees or any sort of narrowing down of, of the potential uses for that. I think that might help your client's cause. I don't know, I don't know how my fellow council members feel about it, but, but those are some of my, my big concerns is, is I'm really just hesitant to approve something that I don't know much about other than the term "medical," which is all we really have right now.
Okay. Well, to address that, I'll be brief as I can. The, the ownership certainly was amenable when we were talking to the planning commission about, look, we can limit it to what the commission mentioned as objectionable medical uses, which was urgent care, surgery center, the types of things that they felt may have either longer hours or more intense uses. And my client is certainly open to that. You know, another way that I've seen projects like this is, is you, you could build in a condition that says, in six months, we'll do an analysis of the parking impacts after this takes occupancy. And at that time, it automatically comes back to staff, comes back to, in this case, the commission, or you could have it come back to you, but I imagine you would probably defer to the commission. And then you'd actually get live data feedback built into the approval that says, look, we're a little unsure. We, we think you, we, we wanna trust you guys, we wanna help you get a tenant. We wanna say yes to this, but we have a couple of concerns. And there's a way to say, okay, we're gonna put those into a condition that says, in six months or one year, whatever that timeline, whatever feels right for you guys, really, and just build that into the condition. And then you, then you don't have to wonder or worry. You can go, well, you know what, in six months or a year, we're gonna get an automatic feedback loop built in as a condition. And it could be the kinda thing that is either annually done or it could say, well, okay, we're gonna do it the first year and see how it works. And then if we have to, it can certainly be amended. The conditions of approval are always something that could be amended. It's a, essentially a living document, and I'm sure the city attorney can weigh in on that. And the other thing I would say is that that might be the best way to go forward. Then that gives you guys a little bit of a, you know, a little yink and you can say it, this is a little too much and we're gonna have to scale it back. Now, obviously, my client doesn't wanna do a build-out for a medical office use that has, you know, 12 patient rooms. And then we figure out in a year that, well, okay, now that's too many, so we've gotta scale it back. But would my, would my client prefer to move forward with a level of certainty that we could have at least 10 or at least 12 and as a maximum? I, perhaps. But again, that's one of those things we have to kinda circle back with the, with the potential tenant. But I think there's a way to be creative and find a solution that works for everybody and, and gets us over the hump. Another way we could obviously do this is do a, do a continuance. And we can go back one, one last pass and say, look, the council wants to approve this subject to more information. And then that maybe gives us enough leverage that the tenant says, okay, fine, you know, put our name out there and tell them we're gonna have, you know, five doctors and we think we'll see, you know, 200 patients a day. I mean, I don't know. So I, I think there's a way to be creative and I do appreciate your concerns. There's a lot of projects where you don't under, you don't, and you can't anticipate exactly what's gonna happen. You know, for instance, they built a Costco near my neighborhood in North Orange County and half of my neighborhood lost their minds because they thought it was gonna destroy everything about our neighborhood. And then it got built and traffic adapted and adjusted and then it's been great. And now everybody has the convenience of that in their neighborhood without all the, the wildest fears that everybody had in their mind, so. But it would certainly be amenable to trying to create some conditions that are flexible or perhaps have a feedback loop so that we work with staff. And I mean, maybe it doesn't even have to come back to the commission unless there's a problem. Maybe it's just a, a feedback loop with staff and code enforcement that kinda makes sure that everybody stays on their best behavior and we don't have a problem.
Thank you.
So city attorney, if you can address that, is that something possible in terms of a, a living CUP and then periodic adjustments? I haven't heard of that.
Yeah, so I, I have seen instances before, for example, where potential traffic impacts maybe are a concern for development. And so you will bake in a condition of approval that, in one instance, could just simply say, if at any time staff determines there may be a potential issue with parking, that they can contact an applicant and have them prepare an updated or modified study to try to determine whether or not there are in fact impacts being generated by that use. As the applicant mentioned, I've also seen instances where you just implement a periodic review where, where a CUP will come back as a matter of course before, in most instances, it's the planning commissions, that they can evaluate implementation of the use and determine if there's any ongoing concerns with it. And then based on that level of review, that can lend itself to updated or modified conditions of approval, which speaks to this idea of a living document. You know, we, you could be in a situation, for example, where you try to establish some form of upward cap in the terms of rooms or physicians that will be onsite and come back in an annual review and realize, okay, well, maybe that was not stringent enough and we wanna curl back on that. Or maybe you hear from the applicant that, you know, business is great and we'd like two more, two more physicians to be onsite. And maybe that's not an issue once you've seen the use in application and working on the ground. So I do agree with the, the idea that you have some flexibility and that there may be some creative approaches to drafting conditions on this.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, concerns?
Questions or comments, but no questions.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
And then if there's nobody else that wishes to speak, I guess we close the public portion of the hearing and back here to council. So you have a comment?
Sure. So I'm, I'm really not concerned about the parking because we can debate all night whether that's been addressed or not. I've been in that shopping center where I haven't been able to find a place to park and I've been in there where I've gotten a front row, no problem. I'm not concerned about the sales tax because I think it's minimal for the size of that place. I'm more concerned about the execution of our general plan, that a few years ago, we spent a lot of money and a lot of time and we tried to create a very well-thought-out, organized city where we had different areas. We had the recreation area, we had the medical area, we had the light industrial area. And it seems like in, in going with this, we're gonna be setting a precedence where, well, until, you know, it's gonna be zoned for this until the developer comes and says, well, we can't develop that, that happened to us next door. I, I feel that we're being swallowed up by medical offices here. You know, the, the precedent setting of what happens when Hoff's Hut goes away, we know they're gonna go away within the next year or two. Are they gonna come back to us and say, well, we can't rent that out for retail, so now we need to go more medical offices? As far as being in a, a location where there's not a drive-by, a lot of, not a, you know, walk-in traffic, Nick's Deli and Campai Sushi are on Florista and they're packed every minute they're open. So I, I'm, I'm gonna kinda disagree on that. The fact that retail is going down, yes, I do do more online shopping, but as good as technology is, I haven't a way, found a way to eat online yet. So I still do need to go into a restaurant and eat. And I see probably weekly, Cypress is opening up small eateries everywhere in their cities. Long Beach is opening up shopping, The Hanger. Buena Park is opening up The Source. It's small retail, it's food. We still do need gathering places here. As much as our population is aging, I still want a place to go eat. And I think, once we get rid of that opportunity, we're never gonna get it back. So the, those are really my concerns. We do have medical areas here where medical professions can go and do their business. And I, I think we really need to stick with the general plan because otherwise, what was the point of doing it? And we're just gonna have the city that's. And we're just going to have the city that's kind of hit or miss of what section are we in of the city.
Thank you.
I think when it, when it all boils down, I remember going through the general plan and that was, it was specifically stated, we don't want to become a city of medical offices. So I'm in line with Shelley's thoughts.
Mark, anything else?
No. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there any kind of a motion? I'll entertain it.
I'll make a motion to uphold the Planning Commission's denial of the CUP.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? For this one, city clerk, can we have a roll call vote? The motion.
So we'll be taking a roll call vote to uphold the Planning Commission's denial of the CUP. Mayor Kusamoto.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Murphy.
Aye.
Councilmember Chirko.
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Lied. Okay. With that, we will go ahead and take a short recess, maybe let's say 10 minutes. And that way, if you want to come and get your signatures, thank you for, I hope this was informative for you all. And 10-minute break. We'll reconvene at 8:25. I call the meeting back to order and we are on item 11B, which is the master fee schedule update. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. City council, the finance director, Maria Luis Valdez, will do the report.
So city staff has conducted an annual review of the master fee, which is prepared in an effort to keep cost recovery in parity with the services rendered. At this time, we like to recommend an increase of 2.5, which is the CPI for the Orange County area. The proposed changes to the master fee schedule are attached in Attachment 1 labeled 2019-20 Master Fee Schedule. It is proposed for adoption in, for July 1, 2019, for implementation, if you so approve.
So I guess one question, has anything gone down or has everything just pretty much gone up for the CPI?
Most of the, there's certain fees, user fees, that have all, and if they are not capped at a state level, then we have increased them by 2.5%, which was the CPI. I would also like to note that we did discuss this as a budget gap measure, so we would generate about approximately $19,000 out of that.
Okay.
But there's a comparison, so you can see from 1819 to 1920 on the attachment, so you can see what exactly changed. And I highlighted that in light yellow form, so you see what the changes are. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any, on the user fee.
Okay. Questions? Anybody?
I do have one.
Councilmember Gross.
I believe we're required by state law, and I'm just looking to clarify, that we cannot charge more in fees than we, than is actually there. In other words, we can't make 10 bucks on it.
Yeah. I'm sorry, do you mind if I respond? So the user fees must be tied reasonably related to the actual cost of providing services for which they're assessed. The city's basis for determining those fees was an underlying fee study that conducted time and hour studies to determine what the actual staff's cost was. And then once that's done, it's permissible to tie future increases to CPI to make sure that those established fees are tracking changes with real-world costs.
Oh. Well, that kind of brings me to my question. If we've set a fee, we know that it takes X amount to perform that service or function. When we set a fee, we add a 2.5% CPI on it. If that bumps up above what our cost is, do we look at each fee individually or are we no longer tied to doing it?
Standard practice is to have a fee study established for a given year and then a fee escalator tied to CPI included or made, in this case, through a recommendation in that study, so that your fees will stay current without the need to come back every year and replicate the study. So it is standard practice across jurisdictions to have the CPI escalator tied into their fee studies.
And our fee schedule was last on July 31 or was it 2015?
Yes. That was, we did a citywide user fee study and that was adopted by city council on July 31, 2017. And then after that, we were directed to do an annual review. And this is where we're coming forward with our second annual review and a recommendation for an increase of 2.5%.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have a question?
I do remember when we did that study, it was a pretty comprehensive. It took a number of months and we did go through and we found out that we were overcharging for some based on state law. But we could also tie everything to the CPI every year and still defend our hourly rates without having to go back every year. So this is what makes it defendable, so at a minimum, we could raise it by the CPI and not have to go through what we did a couple of years ago.
Yeah, that's correct. And we even adjusted it one time in between as well, within this last year. And it's also standard practice to periodically look at it again, so five, six years out, somewhere in that range was the original recommendation.
Okay. No other questions? I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing if anybody wishes to speak on this item. And seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and back here to the council. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay. Chirko, motion. Murphy, second. All those, we do, we do a roll call or?
Just regular vote.
Regular vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Next. Tap through all these pages. We need hyperlinks.
There's hyperlinks.
Not on the, not on the company, yeah, sorry. Do you mind? Okay. This one is 12B, the city council agenda policy. And I guess staff report, just.
At its January 22, 2019 special meeting, council directed staff to bring forward a policy regarding the process for assembling the city council meeting agenda. The Los Alamos Municipal Code addresses agenda procedures throughout Title II Administration and Personnel. The relevant code provisions have been incorporated into the policy along with the current practices and best practices from surrounding city. This policy will help to streamline current practices and ensure equity is applied to all requests to place items on a city council agenda. Policies that have already been codified into the municipal code would require an ordinance to change them. And the policy has been attached for your review. I'm happy to go over each section if necessary or just answer questions from council.
Okay. Anybody have questions for clerk on this?
Just one minor issue. Is the recommendation in Section 6 of the policy regarding outside organizations wishing to make a presentation, three weeks seems like a long time. I don't know. Do we usually get notice further out than three weeks prior to a meeting?
For the outside organizations, it's usually like the one we had tonight, Donate Life, where they know a year in advance when their month is going to be. If it comes in later than three weeks and we have enough time to plan for it, we very, well, in my seven years as city clerk, we haven't denied an outside organization's request. Even if it came in after three weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
I just had a couple of questions, just because when I came onto council, it was made very clear on how to get something on the agenda, that if it was either, it was either to council members or the mayor, and that was told to me by staff. So I just want to make sure that as we do this, we all understand exactly what the rules are because apparently it's, that wasn't the case. So I just want to make sure. So on the adding agenda items, it says that the city manager will direct staff to place items. So who owns the city council agenda as far as who's got the ultimate authority about what's on the agenda and what's not on the agenda? So I'll give you an example. So you, as a city manager, you put something on the agenda that we feel that it's not the right time or we need more time or however. How do we get something removed? Or is it come down to if we disagree on something, you have precedence over the agenda because it's your agenda or do we have precedence over the agenda because it's our agenda? And it's semantics, but I really want to understand how all this works.
Well, it's primarily the city manager working with the city clerk and whoever the mayor is on board at the same time. But there is also a provision here for removing items from an agenda. So if the city manager places an item on the agenda that the rest of the council, for some reason, doesn't like, we have a provision built in for removing items from the agenda built into this as well.
Okay. I just want to understand. Okay. I'm good.
Yeah, I think the thing is, my kind of concern, Brett, would be if you're a gatekeeper and, and then, let's say there's an item that you don't feel it's appropriate for the city, that's really kind of, you know, going to be back to us, right? And it'd be the mayor's call at that point. And then, you know, again, councils of the past, nine years ago, very contentious and very difficult to get things on the agenda and started that custom of two members can ask, because that was put in place to make the one that was in the minority very, you know, challenged to get something on the agenda. So I think the other part of it is, though, you're not always the gatekeeper on some of this stuff, right? So that was kind of some of my comments back, but it is, you know, cast the way it is. I think the comments I was making, the feedback I provided on the draft, that's already in the code, right? So I'm good with that. So but I think the thing is, we want to govern transparently and sometimes things will be difficult and we just have to make sure as we do the work of the people, we're doing that and we don't get to, you know, we don't have to fight or argue or, you know.
Justify.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the other thing is, we, as a practice, we, whoever the mayor is, the city clerk sends out the planning guide, which is the rough, you know, preliminary agenda that goes to the whoever the mayor is in place. And typically, we're sending that out a little bit more than a week in advance of the council.
But recognize, this council may be different than a future council where the mayor may not be as, I guess, I'll say accommodating of some other viewpoints. And that's what, you know, certainly that's happened in the past. So I think we have to make sure we, we give the minority the voice in order to get something out there for discussion because sometimes it'll be very difficult to discuss, but, you know, we should do that from a good governance standpoint.
Just real quick, you know, I'm looking at Section 4 on ordinance resolutions and contracts. Maybe we could run through that one. It says, "All ordinances shall, all ordinances shall be approved by the city attorney." But then it says, "No ordinances, resolutions, or amendments thereto shall be prepared for presentation to the council unless ordered by a majority vote of the council." So that one, I guess I'm trying to understand, how would it get before the council? How would we vote as a majority on the council to get it before the council? And perhaps I'm missing something here.
Yeah. Under, well, for example, under, under the agenda policy as proposed here, any single council member can direct the city manager to place an item on the agenda for discussion and for informational purposes. So if an individual council member other than the mayor wanted to have discussion about a potential or proposed ordinance, they could have that placed on the agenda and then have the body as the whole make a determination as to whether or not they want to direct staff or city attorney's office, namely, to actually prepare an ordinance to that effect and bring it back for action.
Okay.
A single council member would not be able to direct staff to prepare an ordinance and bring it forward for action with the exception of the mayor, and that's per our code.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So any other questions, discussions on this? Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Hasselbrink?
Second.
Murphy. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. So next, we just have closed session. City attorney, if you can take us to close.
The city council will now adjourn into closed session to discuss the items listed as 13A and 13B on your regular meeting agenda. City council has returned from closed session with no reportable action taken.
Okay. And then going back to consent calendar, we are going to go to item 10C, is it? And is there a motion to approve 10C?
Motion.
Second.
Chirko, motions. Murphy, second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. So two no's, three yeses. It passes. Dissenting is Hasselbrink and Kusamoto.
So closing that item, and I think that was the last item, so we are going to be adjourned until our next meeting. So thank you very much. Good night.
11:30.
That's what I did. I thought the.
You didn't throw it to the pre-ten man.
I thought about the fog. Were we all recording? Thank you.
255-5698, that's 833-255-5698.